Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 22, 2021, City Council Budget Workshop, and we also have a regular work session in reference to solid waste and property maintenance discussion. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address, If by chance you've joined using any other link, we encourage you to log out and then go to that website and log back in. Public comment on any item appearing on the agenda couldn't be sent to public comment@louisstonmaine.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the City Council. And with that, I'll turn this over to Heather.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, City Council. On tonight's agenda, we talked about, or we will plan on talking about, the items that are recommended to be funded through fund balance as well as where the capital improvement stands. And then we do have some suggested reductions, our adjustments to the three utility funds, water, sewer, and stormwater. So I believe all of you were able to get your packet today that I sent this afternoon of the email. I believe the first page lists the fund balance recommendations. And if you look down through there, most of those recommendations were on the initial listing that was published in the proposed budget. The items that were highlighted in yellow represent projects or items that the mayor or the city council had requested to put on the parking lot, if you will, or put on the list. So the first item that falls in that category is one of two program cars are the sedans used by the police department, the police chief at the time, and I know he's in the audience, so if we need further information. Discuss that those program cars get changed out and then traded in and used for his detective vehicles as well as other unmarked cars and so forth. Looking at the other lines, 75 through 83, at the bottom of the list, those items represent new program and service or other items that were brought up during the budget process that are eligible to be funded through fund balance. So at the recommendation to move forward with those items, we've incorporated them there. So that total now represents a use of fund balance of $3,107,955. And then we also talked about surplus funding through the LCIP and moving some of those items over to fund balance for various reasons. And it may be because they have a very short useful life in the case of technology, or at some time in the future, there may be some private sector economic development tied to that that we do not want bonds associated with it because that would jeopardize their tax exempt status. So looking at those projects, that totals another $1.29 million, bringing the total use of fund balance just under $4.4 million. As a reminder, we started this process with a fund balance percentage or coverage of 14.38% using the $4.4 million. It reduces it down to 11.3%. And we've always used that 10% as kind of the sweet spot that we really didn't want to get below, even though our floor is 8%. So that still gives us almost $1.9 million worth of fund balance to, until we hit that target, if you will. Three other projects on this list, lines 84 through 86, also requested to be put on the parking lot list for further discussion, that being the citywide revaluation, the Riverfront Island Master Plan update, and the Red Shop Shell Preservation. So the only other thing I would highlight is on line 74, you will notice that that is in italics. That amount has changed. That's the Bates Mill Steam Plant Reserve. If the developer moves forward and buys or takes over through a purchase and sale agreement, the steam planet Bates Mill, part of the discussion was to transfer the capital reserve. That capital reserve needs to be in the neighborhood of $205,000. So that's why that amount has changed, has increased to satisfy that reserve depending on that, when that purchase and sale goes through. So at this juncture, I would be happy to address any specific questions about fund balance usage or make any changes the council wishes to entertain, whatever you would wish at this point.
So I have a quick question, and it's on the LCIP. The $1 million for municipal garage vehicle and equipment repair. And then next, it shows up in the amount column, but then next to it, it said other sources. Where is that other source? I just want to confirm it's not in the fund balance.
It is exactly in the fund balance. If you look at line 61.
61. All right.
So it has been the practice for several years now because of the magnitude of that amount that the department requests both the LCIP request for those vehicles, given the dollar amount, as well as puts them in the operating budget. So once we kind of sift through, we determine what the funding source will be as we get close to adopting both plans.
Okay. And I'm not trying to shift the subject from the fund balance to the LCIP, but before I talk about a recommendation on the fund balance, the, so the borrowing, borrowing is like
So if you want to, Mr. Mayor, I can go through that sheet and then that way we can address all.
Well, just one quick question. Is it currently still like 600,000 over our policy?
No, it is more like $4.2 million. So if you look at the third sheet for the rest of the council deals with the LCIP projects. These projects are only those projects that impact the debt limitation. So the first column, if you will, labeled amount is the original request. We have one project so far that has been deferred. That is the Lincoln Street Parking Garage. The other sources column is just what it indicates. Those are other funding sources that we're going to use to fund those particular projects. They could be, as in the municipal garage where it was budgeted both places. It could be that based upon their life expectancy or their private activity, we've moved them over to fund balance. In the case of the airport east ramp, that was a budget transfer the city council approved earlier, so that's already been funded. And then we do have some surplus bond premium from the recent sale, so that will reprogram that. That's a similar tactic that we used last year where we funded some of those projects using the premium, which will reduce the debt service going forward. So after you back out that $2,881,050, we still have $11,588,341 still to bond. The debt limit is $4,405,681. So we are still just shy of $4.2 million over the limit.
All right. So I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna make a couple of recommendations that we're still within the 10% on a citywide evaluation. So I think the council should at least consider taking that off the table. The Riverfront Island Master Plan update, I really believe, you know, we haven't even finished the work on the original Riverfront Island Master Plan. And I think it should be a staff-driven master plan update versus an outside hiring for that of an agency. And of course, I would encourage city administrator Dote to chime in on anything that I suggest. And then looking at the million-plus vehicle purchases for PW, I can't remember, it was listed in priority and a track excavator at 255,000 was, I think it was on the bottom of the list, if not very close to the bottom of the list on priority. So I would also suggest that that be taken off the table. And then if we can shift anything from the budget to the fund balance to reduce the possible tax increase or identify ways to get us back within our spending limit, I would highly encourage the council to stick to the 80% rule as best we can. But again, I'm sure staff is going to want to chime in on some of that.
I'll just quickly chime in, Mayor. Just regarding, and I think, you know, certainly look for Director Hunter to add anything, you know, that she sees as well. But I would certainly need to, you know, starting with the citywide evaluation, I would just want to, you know, make statement it's something that we certainly could remove. But I just caution, I guess, is the way we have it planned out, it would just create a bigger cliff, so to speak, or need when we get to it. That's, you know, that's really the impact. I think we all understand that. So I think skipping that this year just would have that, you know, we're gonna pay for it later because we are going to have a point where we're going to be forced to do this, or should do it. The master plan on the riverfront, that would be, you know, update, I should say, that I would like to really have a discussion, I guess, with our staff about capacity. You know, being able to actually update that effectively. I just think it worked in there, and I just want to make sure capacity is there to be able to handle that in a timely manner. I think part of what's driving, you know, a lot of the update here is the activity from an economic development standpoint that we are seeing out there. We're seeing lots of interest, as you know, with, you know, developers and some recent movement out there. And I think staff are seeing the opportunity to get this updated in a timely manner. So again, not saying no, just think that we should really understand that. What, is there a capacity to handle that? And I think those are probably just my two biggest comments. I think, you know, everything else, I think we can, you know, we can talk some more about. But I, those are probably two things I would flag.
Do you know how long we've been at the 10 percentile on our reevaluation within that 10% range? I mean, I think it's been years that we've been there, hasn't it?
Yeah, no, I would actually recommend either if Director Hunter can answer that, we do have the city assessor, Bill Healy, in the audience, that perhaps he could shed some light on that.
I would say to your point, it has been a number of years. I know recently that gap has grown from the state valuation. I know the city assessor presented the workshop to the city council. One thing I would add in the plan with this is to budget a little bit each year to accumulate the funds, recognizing the reevaluation cannot be phased in. It needs to be, okay, here, we've got the accumulation of the money. We're going to pull the trigger. So to the city administrator's point, you know, if we elect to not phase it over a period of time, it would be something that we would have to set aside a significant chunk of either fund balance or bond proceeds for in a future fiscal year.
Bill, would you like to chime in?
I did not see him in the audience.
Yeah, he's brought into the meeting right.
Okay.
Participant right now. Not sure he's hearing us, though. All right. You know, I'm gonna stick by that suggestion, but I recognize this is a council decision. And on the riverfront, even if staff doesn't have the capacity, I think we haven't even implemented the original plan yet. There's still much that could be done just on the original plan. Part of the reason is because I think consistently for the past 10 years, we've invested only 150,000 in improvements every year. And again, somebody can correct me. I was away for a couple of years. And I think that, you know, yeah, that's a modest amount that we've invested there, but we've done it consistently every year. So we still have a little bit more that we can do there with the original plan. Now I'll zip it and let councilors chime in. Okay, Councilor Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard as to the Riverside Plan, I know that a number of investors there that I've spoken to are basing their actions on the future of that that Riverfront plant. I know the Continental Mill, one specifically, you know, the trail going across the front, going into the Thompson area. I know the individual, I don't know if they're still interested in buying that pump station or not, but that was one of their goals was to service a lot of the individuals that would be walking that trail and accumulating in the open park area somewhere. I wouldn't want to stray away too, too far from that. I think it will, if we do that and we do it too strongly, I think it's going to curb some of the development that is planned to, you know, become a reality there. That's just my opinion. Thanks.
Yeah, and I strongly support the Riverfront Plan, and we have been investing. But what I'm trying to get across is that we haven't even finished that yet. And updating that when there are still many projects that could be done there to improve that area. If anything, I'd rather see the 60,000 go into doing more projects there if we're not going to be able to take it away. Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think the use of fund balance for items that were initially proposed in the LCIP seems a wise choice for the three projects that we are in the parking lot. I am in favor of a citywide revaluation. I think especially over this past year, the market has changed so much. And I think property owners would be better served having an understanding of the fair market value of their homes at this point. Lewisden has added many new housing projects over time, and I think it's only going to benefit us to get into a more regular cycle of that reevaluation. So the cliff that city administrator Dote referred to isn't hit all at once. I think maybe it might be time, and I'm sure the assessor has opinions on this, but to get into a regular cycle and, you know, rip the Band-Aid off this first time and then do it more, not obediently, but regularly to make sure that we don't slip back into this again. I mean, it's just been way, way too long and realize it's not a politically popular opinion, but that's fine. In terms of the Riverfront Island Master Plan update, I think Mr. Mayor points are salient, but I do want to keep options available and keep that work moving forward with the momentum that staff is asking us for because I believe there is a lot of promise in that area. And the more staff time that can be dedicated to capitalize on that seems wise to me. And then, yeah, I think all three projects would just keep pushing us forward in an economically challenging time where we can use fund balance. It doesn't impact the tax rate, but we can continue to push forward.
And I would just argue that, you know, we're gonna have a significant tax increase this year, and I don't see things changing in years to come. And with the reevaluation, it's going to be a double whammy on the residents of this community because we already know once that evaluation's done, it's going to shift from commercial to residential. And I tend to think most property owners, yeah, they'd like to know the real value of their home is listed. But I think when the option of having that and then significant increases in their taxes, I'm not quite so sure that they would go in that direction. Councilor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess regarding the revaluation, revaluation, I, at some point, we're gonna have to do it. And I do worry about a cliff happening at some point eventually. So, you know, I'd be supportive. If I had to make a decision now, I'd say keep it in the budget. Let's go forward with it this year. Regarding the Riverfront Island Master Plan, I do think it'd be good to have it up, you know, updated a little bit. I think that could do well for the city and then do well for our staff. I guess I'm pretty similarly thinking what you are, Mr. Mayor. You know, maybe not this year. Maybe now's not the time. Let's work on implementing more of the original plan, like the current one. So I'm not opposed to, you know, updating that, that plan at all. Just, you know, maybe next year we can revisit it. And I'm not sure if it was asked about the Red Shop Shell Preservation. Yeah, I mean, I'm very supportive of doing more with our canal system. You know, I see that as just an awesome opportunity for the city going forward. And so any project related to that, I'm generally going to be supportive of. So, yeah, I'm supportive of that. So that helps for direction. Thanks.
Councilor Ray.
I guess I have a question. If someone from staff could answer. I realized the assessor couldn't quite unmute earlier. But I was reading a little bit about revaluation and phased in increases in the assessed value, and I think Connecticut allows for that. Does the state of Maine allow us to do that process as well? So we could do the revale, have that on hand, and maybe phase it over a couple of years?
So actually, we, I just got some good news from our assessor. He was having some technical difficulties and is available with audio now and video. If Dale wanted to bring him in, he could probably comment on some of the other stuff he's heard and that answer that as well. Bill, can you hear us? There we go.
Yes, I can. Thank you. Hopefully you can see me, too.
We can. Thank you.
I was on a tablet. I wasn't able to get in, but my wife grabbed my iPad, so I'm good right now.
So you've heard some of the comments.
I have.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The difficult part about phasing in a revale is that there was never really a good time, and you never know how much to phase in at any given moment. The best way to do this is to get the work done and just implement. Because had they done that back in 2006, we would have been overvalued at the time, but we would have been able to make adjustments to bring it back to what the market was at that time. Because it was up, they did the revale, and then the market dropped some. So you can do that once you have the database working the way it's supposed to. Right now, because they didn't do the revale in 06, we're maintaining two sets of values, and I can't make adjustments on the fly like that. It's just impossible at this point. And as far as, as Heather mentioned, it's difficult to get a revaluation company to work with us. And that's why I was trying to build the fund over a few years to make sure that we had the money when we were ready to move forward. This would be the first installment, if you will. I think it's a, we could probably get someone to commit in year three or four. But, you know, even at this point, I don't believe I'd get anybody to work with us until we had more funding.
Councilor Jelinez.
So, Mr. Healy, what you're saying is that that 128,500, that's not going to get it done. All that is is just a, you know, a down payment that we're trying to save up for.
That's correct. Right. So in other municipalities I worked in, we actually had a reserve fund that the council put money in every year. So when a revale was required, the money was available. The difficult part is for me to come to you in one year and ask you for $700,000 to do a revale. So that's why I was trying to build a fund over time.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification from me.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you. And so knowing that, I am very against it being in the LCIP for five years in a row, that sort of thing, and us bonding it and then having to pay the interest on it. Is there a mechanism by which we can use the fund balance for that payment all at once? I don't know if that's good practice, Director Hunter, or what might happen there. But I think bonding that money makes me far more nervous knowing that.
I agree that the goal would not to be to bond it. I do know some municipalities have done it because there is a useful life, if you will, to that. I would rather not. We definitely have availability in our fund balance to do that. It's just at what point the council wants to pull that trigger and start doing a revaluation, whether we do it incrementally monetary till we save it up, or if the council wants to just say, okay, this is the year we're going to do it, and we're going to use fund balance to do it. That's the council's purview to make that decision.
I think, too, my brain is thinking of a county thing, not a city thing. Do we have reserve accounts in the city?
We do for encumbered items only. We have, in the case that Bill's referring to, we do something similar with the transit buses where we provide a flat $50,000 a year to accumulate reserves, if you will, to purchase buses. But up to this point, that's the only mechanism we've done because most of our projects are pretty much standalone projects.
And sorry, one more question. Do you anticipate our fund balance to grow at the same rate in this rollover as it has in the past? Or do you expect any anomalies there?
I think there, my anticipation is just to kind of step back a little bit. When we look at these baseline measurements, the 14% and the 11%, that includes both city and school department revenues when we do that snapshot. So as our revenues fluctuate and as the school departments fluctuate, if they increase, that means our level of fund balance, unreserved fund balance, has to increase accordingly to stay within those parameters. As far as this year, because we had the spending freeze going into last fiscal year or at the tail end of last fiscal year, we had probably more fund balance than we normally would have anticipated. I do anticipate increasing fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. I don't think it will be at the same amount that we did in FY '20.
Would it be more in line with FY '19, '18, '17?
Probably.
Okay. Awesome.
I mean, I'm thinking generally in the $2 million to $2.5 million. But it depends on how this last quarter goes, particularly now that we're starting construction season and cleaning up parks and that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Councilor Ray.
I would like to see the full amount of a citywide revaluation put into the fund balance for this year. But I realize I may be struck down for saying that.
Anyone have, so if councils could think about that so that we can get some guidance, Councilor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very supportive of the reevaluation plan and for that to be in the budget this year. You know, property owners should have the right to know or be taxed, you know, at the current value of their property. Heather, I'm wondering, for the American Rescue Plan, can we use that funding for this?
Everything that we've known about and the details are still out, it does not, it would not seem that that would be an eligible expense. Having said that, it may be some other projects that we have in the bonding and/or the fund balance may be eligible, which would allow us to use those mon- Which would allow us to use those monies to accumulate to the revaluation.
I like that idea, um, thank you.
Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, not a very popular sentiment, I'm sure. Uh, but I kind of believe that we should be headed towards a revaluation. Uh, if I read correctly, and I I I'm just not sure of the years, but the last general revaluation that was put into effect was in the eighties or late eighties. We did one in two thousand six, but it was never implemented. Uh, we've talked so much this year about inequity, this is a prime example of inequity. For everybody, regardless of where they they fall in the tax base. So I could be supportive of this, I recognize that uh, we've got a lot of things on our plate this year, but I think it's probably time that we. I'll borrow the phrase that's been pushed around tonight, pull the trigger, I mean that uh, it just seems right to me. I uh, was uh, perusing a property that we had out of state that sold in twenty fifteen. And again, in twenty eighteen, and look at the value today, it has gone up almost one hundred percent. I wish that I had owned this house when it sold the last time, or I wish I owned it now and was putting it up for sale. I mean, it's phenomenal, the real estate market in Seacoast, New Hampshire. Uh, almost double in six years' time, so I'm sure that property values around here have changed. Given the current price for construction materials, I know that uh, a fellow that I know quite well, it's a developer. Has told me that the price of his homes is gonna go up this year about sixty thousand dollars, just in materials alone. And this is on a, about a three hundred thousand dollar home, new home. Uh, two by fours are going for eight dollars and something now, a piece, that's not a bundle of twenty five, that's a piece. It it seems insane, but uh, we're still laboring under, I mean, I I know what my valuation is here. Uh, I know i- if I had to sell it for that price, um, I would, I would be. Very sad to think that I would have to sell it for that price, and I just think that people should have the uh, the benefit of the full valuation. The cumulative effect of a revaluation, yeah, you're gonna perhaps increase somebody's taxes, not everybody's taxes are gonna go up. Yeah, you're gonna create more equity between uh, commercial and residential property, but you, you know, it it just makes sense. That's all, that's all I've got to say about it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Bill, not to put you on the spot, but. Um, my understanding is for the revale to go through, we need to be on the new tax system, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, can the work be done and go live on the new tax system be at the same time?
The new tax system sh- will have to be in place before we go live with the revale numbers.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, because I know that was a salient point that Bill and I spoke about offline to let the council know that may be a critical component. So, I know they were looking at FY twenty three for a live date for taxes. So maybe what we could do, instead of funding all of the revale this year is split it between twenty two and twenty three, so it would be in place to go forward in in twenty four.
I think my concern with that is, new council, um, in for FY twenty three's budget. We've already heard from one counselor that they won't be returning, and so I I just want to raise that. I'm sure if if it was put in and recommended by staff, hopefully, uh, that council would take that signal. Um, but I I know that's not always reality, so um, then I would wonder about like the reserve account, using it maybe that way instead, but.
I'm a, I'm a firm believer that, you know, with the mayor and the councils, we're all kind of one body working together. We take ownership for all decisions, but in this case, Dennis, I'm gonna wanna a forward button. When that evaluation is done, uh, to shift this over to the council, so. Alright, so I guess we'll need a thumbs up, thumbs down on uh, to provide Heather with some guidance on finding ways to fund the total, you you're still asking for that, Counselor Ray, okay. Uh, to get money set aside through fund balance for the total amount of the evaluation. So, people supportive of that, I see two. Yeah, I real, I need. So I see three.
So, um, can I just ask, so we're doing, you're asking for a for a thumbs up on full funding for the valuation versus splitting it into two years?
Through the fund balance, and the recommendation of the finance director was splitting it half, half and half, but.
That's what I would support.
Okay, uh, so I saw three for full now, just I wanna make sure everyone had an opportunity to to give a thumbs up there, and then what about the half and half suggestion? Okay, there you go, thank you, clear direction. So what does that do to the, uh, there's still room in the fund balance within our policy, correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Alright, uh, anything else on fund balance, folks?
Can I get a kind of thumb direction on where we are with the Riverfront Island Master Plan update?
Okay, so I I kind of heard a lot of support to kind of keep it in place, but let's have a thumbs up for folk. Yeah, let's just make sure, let's have a thumbs up for folks who wanna keep it in place. And there's four to keep it in place.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, anything else on fund balance, folks, because if not, we'll shift over to the LCIP, is that the direction you wanna go in, Heather?
That would work fine.
Alright, I think you can take that away.
Okay, so on the third sheet, um, we kind of ran through it quickly already, but. Um, that's how the LCIP is currently mapped out as it stands. There is eleven million five hundred and eighty eight thousand four, three hundred and forty one dollars worth of projects. Our debt limit is a little over seven point four million dollars. So we are a bit under four point two million dollars, uh, or I'm sorry, over two, four point two million dollars of the limit. I have reached out to the school department to see if they are suggesting any changes with their LCIP. And I have not heard back yet from that standpoint. And then, at this juncture, um, you will see the list of the city side is just about six point one million dollars remaining.
Right. Uh, again, I'm gonna ask, argue passionately that we stay within our policy on this. We spend a significant amount of our budget every year on debt, uh, and it was much, much worse. Because of this policy, we've gotten our debt under control, uh, in this community. So I'll throw that out there for the thought process of the council. Counselor LaJoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, for Heather, on the LCIP, the SCBA. Uh, that's highlighted, i- is that uh, something that's been taken out?
The.
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Right, that's been moved to fund balance funding.
Okay, but that, so so that's still available, am I correct?
They still have the ability to get to buy them, correct?
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, because uh, uh, in all actuality, I believe the company that we currently have, which is Survive Air has gone out of business, uh, and therefore, I know there's a period of time they have to supply parts. Uh, however, when when I was there, I had implemented uh, uh, in department a service program, uh, because when we used to send these SCBAs out uh, for a twenty five cent gold ring, it would cost us a hundred dollars for bench charge plus shipping. Uh, so there was a a good uh, cost savings there. So I I'm just happy that it's still in there, uh, because it's uh, if if something should happen and we wouldn't be able to provide the proper parts for the SCBAs on Survive Air. Um, the firefighters, uh, lacking that tool would not be able to go into the buildings.
Correct.
So, um, that's, that's my thing on it, thank you, appreciate it.
I will let the na- council know, um, I've been speaking with Lincoln Jeffers on looking at the Burt Street parking and paving sidewalk project to see if that would be CDBG eligible, so he is checking on that, so that may be a possibility. Um, that that project moves over and away from the bond side. But I just do not have that final answer yet. But we would do that before we approve, recommend approval to the city council, we would have that answer.
Counselor Jolinas.
Thank you, that would be a, that would be a big deal, um, my question was really, um, Mr. Mayor to you. When you started earlier tonight, you cited three different things, one of which was the public works equipment for over a million. And I was trying to follow what you were saying, is is that here listed in the LCIP, the million fifty five?
It is, but it's been moved, it's listed on this, but it's been moved to the fund balance now. The total, right, the total million five five, and then I I spoke of one piece of equipment that was at the bottom of the priority list.
So the math hasn't been adjusted?
No, that had not been, he just talked about that tonight, okay.
No, the math on the LCIP, I think, is what is she talking about, that million, is that, that's not, no longer showing in that, or is?
It's been removed from that column.
Okay. Counselor Ray.
Um, I I don't know how helpful this is, but um, every time we've talked about the LCIP through the school committee. Um, it's been a a rather um, uh, friction-filled conversation um, in which the member, certain members of the school committee do not feel that the school department has gotten their due through the LCIP or other parts of the budget, and so, um, I think the direction for school administration has been a little hard to discern, um, and in addition to that, it's school vacation week, so we haven't really been online, I feel like this week, so, um, I can, I can take sentiments back uh, to the school committee. We do meet on Monday night, um, and I'm happy to share any suggestions folks have with them, um, but I I do see uh, kind of the disparities, I will say, we don't have much of a fund balance um, to to move around things with, but um, again, we are hoping to institute a fund balance policy and um, begin to work through that in in the coming years, so that we have some options other than just bonding everything.
Just gonna, I'm gonna add that part of the reason we are such a high tax community is because of our borrowing, borrowing, borrowing over the years, decades of borrowing more than we could afford. I just believe it's fiscally irresponsible to to uh, go over our our policy on borrowing. Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, kind of segue off of that, I would completely agree with you on that, um, about the borrowing. And um, if it's, I guess I'm a little concerned about how much the school department's asking to borrow. Um, I guess if I could have any, any uh, message relayed to the school committee. Um, I haven't been able to see the conversations they've had on the LCIP, but just remind them that, um, the state will help pay for new schools, but they won't pay for expanding existing schools and in growing districts where there, there were so few of in Maine, you know, we had to pay the cost of that. And so, I would hope the school committee considers all the expansions done, like at the middle school, McMahon, Farwell. Now at the high school that was just approved last year for, I mean, over ten million. And so now, you know, three and a half million dollars in one year for for the the systems at LMS. Yeah, that's a big ask in itself, and so, you know, I would ask them to maybe submit to us, you know, a priority list of of what they have, because I don't think that they are, should get everything on that list. If we had to make the call tonight, I would say the three and a half million for the LMS repairs, and then postpone everything else until next year. I remember when I was, you know, um, I mean, I remember back in the, I was chair of the facilities subcommittee in the school committee. And we used to go through the LCIP projects and try and, you know, okay, what can we, you know, wait until next year, we have to be reasonable with our request. Um, and so I hope that the members of the school committee can, you know, take a similar approach like that and and really go through it. And I hope they can realize that this community has been very, very good to our uh, school department. And we certainly haven't gotten a fair shake from the state, we've had to pay a lot more in cost than we probably should have. The state really should have paid the cost of expanding our schools, it's really no different than creating new schools, um, it's just semantics, so. Um, I think there's, there's a lot to unpack there, but we, I think this community's been very good to the school system, I wish we could be better. Um, so with all the requests that they're making, we definitely should slash a bit of that, so, if any of them are watching, I'd like to see, you know, a priority list. But personally, I think we should just do the LMS project. And uh, yep, that was it, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, old saying that goes around, if beggars were choosers, then horses would ride. And that's probably where we find ourselves right here, I totally agree with what you've had to say. In the not-too-distant future, uh, past, rather, excuse me, not-too-distant past, uh, the city found itself in a very precarious position. This would be much akin to any one of us going out to the bank or the credit union and borrowing money to pay for fuel oil. Uh, to pay the power bill, whatever, uh, you know, recurring expenses shouldn't be borrowed on. And I'm a firm believer in that, we have to do that, uh, in our household, we don't borrow for recurring expenses. And I I think it's only prudent that the city thinks the same way. Uh, I tend to agree with a lot of what the Counselor Jensen just had to say. You know, I I wish, I wish this were a Sears robot catalog, we can pick and choose and put everything we wanted together, and here you go. But it it just isn't gonna be that, and I think we have to come to that realization as a group. We are committed to do right by the taxpayers of the city. Uh, anything we do, they have to be able to absorb. And I would ask you to just take a look back at the tax lien situation, how many tax liens have occurred over the previous years? See if there's a significant difference between the numbers of those as the years progressed up until today. And I just hate to see that sort of thing, I mean, we we're faced with that, every so often, we we are asked to either approve or disapprove, whatever, uh, something having to do with a tax lien. And I'm sure that in some instances, maybe that's because people don't wanna pay their taxes. But I think when faced with the loss of their property, most people do whatever they can to catch up and pay up. Uh, and if they lose it, it's because they can't pay, so therefore, I would caution everyone, let's, let's be very careful in what we do here. I think that there's a number of items, I I'm not going to sit here and just list them all out, but I see plenty of dollars there that could be deferred or cut right out altogether, thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, Director Jeffers, that had his hand raised, and I would assume it might have something to do with the sidewalks that Director Hunter was speaking about, good evening.
Good evening, yes, and now Heather had sent me a email earlier today, I had not had a chance to respond to it. And I perked up as I was listening to tonight's council meeting, so I did want to weigh in on that. Uh, I believe we will be able to fund it, it was, uh, those kind of improvements were included in the uh, our five-year consolidated plan. There will be a process, council would have to take an independent action, it was not included in our regular CDBG budget for this year. So it'd be a reallocation of other dollars that we have, so it would be a a separate action, but it is absolutely something we should be able to fund.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so Director Hunter, are you looking for, uh, I mean, is the LCIP ready to kind of give a nod to, if that's, if the council's ready for that, or what are you looking for specifically on that?
It's it's just to determine where the projects are. We're scheduled to. Are you're scheduled to vote on the LCIP on June first? So it just kind of gives you a benchmark of where some of those projects lie. I know there were two other items that were on the parking lot list. One was the Lou at Kennedy Park. And the pickleball courts, so I have highlighted those currently. Those are being recommended. For funding through surplus bond proceeds. So um but other than that, and then what? Director Jeffers has had mentioned on the CDBG funding. It's it's really the council's purview if they want to provide directions on deferring any projects or or what.
Thank you. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I I think I'm hearing from folks that um school department needs to do a little bit more work on their side of the LCIP. And I just wanted to clarify what Counselor Jensen said. Do were you trying to say you would only support the LMS upgrades? Or everything except for that?
Uh, yeah, Mister Mayor, if I may. I I guess my preference would be the only thing that we would fund would be the LMS upgrades and then. Like the way I'm thinking about it, we probably should take everything else off the list and postpone it for a year because three and a half million enough.
Okay, I can, I will absolutely pass along that suggestion. I think that still keeps us. Very far over the bond limit is the only thing.
Counselor Ray, your hand went up again. So is everybody comfortable with the like the the Lou for Kennedy Park and pickleballs being in other sources? Seeing lots ahead nodding. So Counselor Jensen.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I still think we should have a more holistic discussion about the issue of public bathrooms before we go and. Forward with any funding initiative and make any solid plans.
And so what is that something? Uh, city administrator straighted Dote that we could squeeze in maybe in our in the next meeting or two?
Yeah, I I I think we certainly could. Um, we could certainly add something in the next workshop. Certainly, yes, that's not.
All right. Do you have enough information from previous conversations with Counselor Jensen on or do you need guidance on on? Anything specific staff can do to prepare for that?
I I don't think so at this point. I think we have um, I think really if in and if Counselor Jensen wants to correct me, I believe. You know, really, the the um, the issue that wants to be discussed is really, as you said, you know, public bathrooms, but also the location and where we're. Where we're thinking about those and in in, you know, strategically, I guess you could say, you know, around the city. So I think um, you know, we could have something uh, you know, in our next regularly scheduled um workshop. I'd look to actually Deputy City Administrator Doughty just. To confirm I'm not committing something um beyond what uh the the people that will actually get it done and and make this happen. So. Dale, do you have any want to add to that?
Yeah, I think we can pull together a general discussion, especially about location, um clientele, you know, who they're aimed at and. Really get some guidance at least. I think we have enough to do that.
And I think it's important for the public to really understand what we're proposing because there's, you know, lots of comments about they're heated and stuff and. Criticisms, so it'll be good to clear the air there. Counselor Jensen, anything specific you want to add before I move to another counsel?
No, I mean, you know, I've I've spoken about about this before, and so I appreciate having the conversation. Yeah. Yeah, I'm 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 keeping an open mind going into it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Jensen, uh I'm sorry, Counselor Jolinas.
Thank you. Um, I I'm in support of both of those items, you know, um. Being funded through other sources or surplus bond funds, whatever, but just regarding the um, the Lou for Kennedy Park. But we'd also had some pretty detailed discussion at the Lewiston area public health committee level with Deputy City Administrator. So there's a lot of notes there from that. So. You know, in terms of just bringing that to the city, I mean, I know that um, you know, Dale, you have that and that was that was a really valuable discussion, I thought.
Was there a discussion on recommended locations from the public health or was that was it really more big picture stuff?
I would say it was more big picture stuff. I mean, there was some discussion about location, Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember it being a real deep dive at that level. It was more about. Yeah, just just the need for it.
There was the need. I think we talked about uh who would serve, you know, the clientele. And then that there, then there was some general, as as Counselor Jolinas said, there was some discussion around location versus client. Where who would serve, where it would go, um no direct recommendations, but really um just trying to connect those dots.
All right, I look forward to that conversation about a loop. Counselor Ray.
I just wanted to ask, um, the amount that's quoted in here, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, is that for just one facility? Or a series of facilities in one spot or more than one location?
That's for one, and that's really for that that facility, which is all prefabricated. And again, that was just a place, you know, to to all of you, that was really just a placeholder. That was. A facility that had been brought to our attention. We put it in in part to have this conversation. Figure out where it needs to go and then what kind of facility we'd want to build. And and I think we'll get into some of the challenges of those in the next meeting and and you'll see why we use that as a model. It's it's just a discussion model.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Hunter, anything else specific that you need guidance on or are we there?
I think we are all set. Um, it's going to be at this point to Counselor Ray's. Point, it we will still be above the limit, even if the school department just funds their um high school HVAC system. So. We would have to move essentially the other one point eight million. To get to your ten percent fund balance threshold. To even move to get to. The bond limitation. So I don't know if that's something council wants to consider now.
Yeah, is there, uh, you know, I might as well throw it out there. Is there any support for staying within our bond limit policy? So what's uh? Uh, can we do a thumbs up if there's support and then I'll go to you leave, but just so this gets answered. So there is, there appears to be some support to try to stay within the. Bond limit limitation. So if staff can just maybe consider that over the next week or so. All right, thank you. Counselor Clement, you all set? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, anything else on? Budget stuff?
No, the last page that you were presenting. Were a handful of adjustments on the. Utility funds. And you will see the um, there's a twelve thousand dollar reduction on the water fund. A thousand dollar reduction on the sewer fund and then a five thousand dollar reduction on the stormwater fund.
Do we need any further discussion on it?
That would be up to the council if they have any other items or directions.
And we will have an opportunity to talk about this again as well, correct? Or when do we have to adopt utilities?
The utilities are scheduled for May eighteenth.
Okay, so we have a little bit more time. So I would encourage folks to really go through their utility budget, so you know, over the weekend or before. You know, we get to that date just so we're prepared. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just backing up for a second, I did have a question there. Uh, one point eight million. We're over our bond limit by that much, Heather.
That's assuming the school department is agreeable to cut all of their projects other than. The HVAC at the middle school and that we transfer the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Burt Street to CDBG funding.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered because. Start looking through and come up with individual items and try to come up with a tally, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Is there any uh other budget items uh that counselors would like to bring up? Okay, seeing now, I'm just going to turn to our attendees, which looks like all mostly department heads. I just want to offer the opportunity. We talked about a lot of stuff tonight. If there's any department head that would like to chime in. That we didn't previously offer an opportunity to, I would encourage you to raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any, uh, just keep an eye on that, Dale, for me in case I'm, something does pop up. All right, with that said, we'll move to uh the only other agenda item, and that's a. Discussion on solid waste and property maintenance discussion. And I think this is relation in relation to some. Uh constituent concerns that we had around Little Canada.
That's correct, Mayor. I'll just do a quick intro. Good, Director Hediger and Code Enforcement Officer Benjamin Westman to present. But you're exactly right. This uh, this is being brought on uh with uh, you know, several complaints that we received in the um Little Canada area. I know counselors have been. Hearing these, um, and by request to council, we brought this forward. Um, staff will present, I think, some some uh brief maybe history about. You know, or current processes, um, and then they have some suggested um. Ideas, I guess, uh, and how we could make some changes and how we approach some of these that we'd like some feedback on um from from the council to to weigh in on. So. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Director Hediger.
Thanks, Dennis. Yeah, so um. I'm not sure if the entire council is aware, but I know that a number of you were copied and involved with a number of. Concerns or complaints from constituents down in uh the Little Canada area. And then we um council had someone present to them as well at during one of the open sessions. And I think that triggered um some questions or concerns from counselors as far as, you know, how are we addressing concerns? In Little Canada, but I would, I would, I would suggest not just Little Canada, but. In the city and in the downtown, because the issues to Little Canada are not unique. Um, if anything. They're less severe than some other areas in the community. So what I attempted to do, and and I apologize not getting uh the memo to you earlier, but we were kind of scrambling to put this together. Knowing that you guys wanted to talk about it sooner than later. But the issues I've identified here are um what we commonly see for trash violations. And I've thrown in there property maintenance as well, because it's not just trash, even though I I think a lot of the complaints that might have been around Little Canada. Were about solid waste and litter. Um, there are also property maintenance code issues that exist in that neighborhood as well as other neighborhoods. In the downtown area. To put things in perspective, um Ben ran some numbers for me and we kind of looked at Little Canada versus the Tree Streets areas and just. To for perspective, it's about a hundred and thirty properties in the Little Canada area. And there's about six hundred and seventy properties in the Tree Street area, and these are just averages, you know, using the GIS and drawing some quick circles. Since January, we've issued thirty-three notices of viola, excuse me, January of twenty nineteen. We've issued thirty-three notices of violation for the Little Canada area, so for those hundred and thirty properties. When you look at the Tree Street area, um, we've issued over eight hundred notices of violation since um January of of nineteen, so. We got, we got challenges. Um, I guess I'll just run through the memo. I don't know that I need to hit every single item on here. Hopefully you guys have seen it and certainly. At any time if there's questions, um, you know, jump in.
Dave, I got a quick question. So the numbers you just gave us from starting in twenty nineteen, are you seeing that we're making progress? I mean, are. Our s- our. Is there a portion of these buildings that you constantly get complaints on that they're getting better? And I mean, I guess I want to understand how much of a difference we're making by the enforcement.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, it's mixed and I'll ask Ben to jump in here in a second. As I noted in the memo, there are properties we've never been to in both of these neighborhoods. There are properties that we go to occasionally and the matters get addressed in a responsible, you know, adequate amount of time. And then there's properties that we're at all the time. So do we see compliance? Yeah, we absolutely do, but there are also other properties where it's 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 a struggle for us. It's a struggle for the landlords. To get that property truly up to speed, whether it's um because landlords don't have resources. Whether they have challenging tenants, maybe they just have a a lack of respect and pride and interest in even doing anything out there. It's a variety of reasons out there. But we do see progress with some properties and then others, um, as soon as it's fixed, we could be back there six months um because of another issue. So i- it's cyclical with some of these properties. Um, I guess I'd ask Ben to chime in because he's, you know, boots on the ground every day out there. I'm sure he has perspective to add.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would, I would probably echo uh your comments as well. You know, David said, I mean, one of the people I use as a prime example. His name's Jim Deacon, not to name names, but uh he's he's a guy. We don't ever go to his properties. He, we don't get complaints because he seems to be responsive. The tenants, they just don't call. Man's got to be close to eighty years old and he's still doing it in downtown Lewiston, um Bartlett Street, Pierce Street. He's there in and out every day and there's other buildings that we go to every single day. So a lot of it boils down to. Tenant behavior, unfortunately. I mean, you know, if I circle back down to River Street, I mean, one of the prime examples that. With the trash issue is one of the tenants on film just throwing mounds and mounds of garbage off the back of their porch onto their. The landlord's property. Uh, I I mean, it's, there's no way the landlord can, you know, foresee that, you know, all he can do is react to that type of issue. You you know, and they do the best they can. But you know, Dave's absolutely right, you know, there's some buildings that just are constant. You know, I don't want to say headaches, but or problems, but we're there pretty routinely. Um, and it's. You know, whether it's a tenant issue, whether it's an owner issue. You know, the solutions aren't, it's not a one and done, so.
Another point to that, Mayor, is um, you know, I was trying to get some other numbers, just, you know. To put things in perspective, not just for you folks, but for us, um, because a question often comes up. I know some of you get phone calls about, you know, you received fines from. From planning and code enforcement. Um, and we recently got an updated spreadsheet from Heather's department. As far as fines that erode to the city. And this is probably a month or two old now as far as the data, but. We had over a hundred and twenty-three fines owed to this department, over twenty thousand dollars in fines owed to this department. That's in civil waste policy, uh, civil, um, excuse me, solid waste penalties and um civil penalties. There's a difference. We'll do like civil penalties for notices of violation related to. Property maintenance issues, zoning violations, things like that versus a solid waste penalty is tied towards. Curbside trash that shouldn't be out there on the wrong day or not in a container or, you know, bulky waste that's not going to get picked up by anybody. Are we going to collect that twenty thousand dollars? I have no idea. Okay, and keep in mind, that's two you, two years. That's uh twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And that's one of the comments I've made in the memo there is, you know, as far as a challenge, not to jump around, but the inefficiency of our system and trying to enforce this. Some of these matters, particularly solid waste between, um, you know, our office, Public Works, the Treasurer's Office. It it's not an efficient system. But as far as um, you know, repeat offenders, are we seeing a difference as the mayor asked? Uh, of those hundred and twenty-three fines, um forty-six of them were to five property owners. So, you know, not quite a quarter, but what, a fifth of these, we're dealing with the same property owners. So it's not foreign to them. They know that they have issues, but for whatever reason, they struggle to get it under control. I guess I'll just touch through some of the common issues and violations. I mean, this conversation, I believe, was triggered in part because of trash. Great. We we tried to do some outreach. What, maybe three years ago now? I've lost a year with COVID, but when we uh did the the trash brochure, um, that went out to everybody that had. Received a water bill. That was. That that was not nearly as effective as we would hope it would be. Uh, we got more phone calls from the single-family homeowner who didn't know that they needed to have a trash can with a lid on it. And the people, uh, the properties in the downtown that we historically have issues with, so. I'm not sure we hit our target audit audience with that, but we do know that people did learn about the fines and the need for. Trash containers and covered containers and when trash should be put out. People did learn about the fines and the need for trash containers and covered containers, and when trash should be put out, was that effective? Again, you know, and Ben will know this too, there's days when downtown doesn't look too bad. When driver drove around downtown today, you know, anticipation and this meeting, it wasn't horrible, the usual spots were horrible, but. There are days when it's, oh my god, what is going on out here? So not enough trash cans, trash being out, put out on the wrong day. Making a note that trash haulers, whether it's city trash haulers or private haulers, they're not picking up loose litter, whether it's in the right of way or the property. So the litter issue doesn't get resolved, we, we, we may be dealing with solid waste, but we're not getting rid of the litter issues. So that's an item that, you know, property owners need to take responsibility for, how do you get the tenants to be responsible for that? Then, Ben already touched behind tenant behavior, density in neighborhoods, that's part of the challenge with. Little Canada, right, I mean, those buildings are on the lot line, there is no additional room on many of those lots, they don't have room for trash cans, let alone a dumpster down there. And there's a lot of units in those buildings, you're producing a lot of trash, and you don't have a lot of room or any place to put it. That's, that's a challenge down there. Bulky waste, people don't know what to do with bulky waste, we kind of joke in the office that, you know, people seem to be able to get a refrigerator delivered to their house. But they don't know how to get rid of the refrigerator. So they put it on the sidewalk and hope that it goes away, I know that drives landlords nuts, drives the city nuts, we end up picking that up, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit. Pandemic, Ben and some of the other guys feel like there's just more visible trash out there, I don't know if it's because people are at home, they're taking, takeout more. But there seems to be more trash out there, and whether that's related to pandemic or not, but it seems, seems to be that way. We've talked about this with you folks with other matters, the ability to contact people in a timely manner. So there's been a discussion about rental registration, that's slowly gearing up, and talking with the Clerk's Office. I think maybe we have this time around, maybe like two-thirds of people registering their properties, so we're getting. We're doing better with that at this time, and I'm sure we'll have a discussion with you folks at some point as far as, you know, the next steps on that. But that rental registration is only as good as it being current, and if we have that information, yeah, we can try to reach people, but if they're not available. How long to be allow waste to sit curbside before it blows all around in a neighborhood? Do we let a day go by, do we let hours go by, do we leave a voicemail, who's responsible? The whole contacting is a constant struggle and challenge for us. And then just overall property maintenance, you know, so again, a lot of this was triggered by trash, but litter on the property, chipping and peeling paint. Structural issues, broken windows, those types of things. Yeah, staff could go out and write up any single property, including City Hall, and find deficiencies that are in violation. We're not necessarily as proactive as we would like to be, we are still largely a reactive office to violations, but when we go out there now. You know, we don't go out there just for the trash complaint, if we get a trash complaint, we go out there and review the entire building and see what deficiencies are readily available. And attempt to try to get those corrected, and maybe that goes to the mayor's point, there was a time, I think, when this office didn't do that. We got a trash complaint, we went to the property and we looked at the trash, and that was it. That does, that's no good, I mean, there's missing siding, there's broken windows, the stairs are unsafe. If we're truly going to make these buildings healthy, safe for the occupants, try to improve the quality of housing in the community, we have to kind of look at everything when we go there. We've been doing this for a number of years now, so it shouldn't be new to property owners, but property owners that were used to just maybe one item on an NOB from the last fifteen, twenty years. Yeah, it is a change of, of, of business for them, because they're not expecting a seven-page notice that has all these deficiencies on it. So the process, I kind of alluded to that, it's not the most efficient process in the world, but it's the tools that we have available to us right now. Again, if we can contact the property owner, we will, but we don't always contact the property owner, I don't want people to think that we call the property owner every time. There's a violation or we observe something. It's a case-by-case scenario, and, you know, we could probably talk about dozen, dozen different situations as to when contacting a property owner is warranted and not warranted. But certainly there are times where, you know, Ben alluded to, we've been to a property a dozen times. We probably don't need to call this person anymore, you know, they, they, they probably have, they, whether they read the notice of violation or not, they should know it by chapter and verse by now. We will issue that notice of violation, we can find people, we have the ability to issue sign citations and civil penalties, those increase incrementally. So that's part of the reason, you know, we're owed twenty thousand dollars, and those people that, the ones I rattled off that, you know. The five property owners that consist of forty-six of those fines, you know, some of them owe us, you know, a thousand dollars or more because it's incremental. As far as the fines are building up. It's worth noting too, you know, all of this is an ordinance, and I can give you guys chapter and verse if necessary, but. There's specific language in the ordinance with respect to solid waste, but we don't even have to notify anybody, I mean, it says that, we can just issue the fine without contacting somebody. And we do that, not all the time, there again, it varies, but my, my point being is there's language in the ordinance that was adopted at some point that says, go get them. We extend deadlines all the time, it might not seem like that to a lot of the property owners out there. But if they communicate with us, they're showing us the willingness to work, clean up a property. We'll give them the more time, you know, assuming it's not a life safety issue, and it's something, it's not an imminent health hazard. We will give people more time, frankly, we give people more time than we'd rather, but if that means it's going to get into compliance versus fines. I'm not interested in their money, I'm interested in compliance. Public Works, Ben, you just want to talk briefly about how that our coordination with Public Works?
Sure. So generally, what'll happen for us, I, I, I believe everybody has the flow charts, is. Public Works may see something, you know, or be excessive, curbside, whatever. They'll contact our office so we can go out and document it, and then send our citation, Public Works will then go pick it up. And then bill them for their time and the, and the weight of, of the disposal. And then there's also the other side of it, where ourselves, you know, we kind of have trash zones that we've tried to focus on. To help address the issues, you know, we'll go around, as David talked about, how things can pan out. Sometimes we call people, sometimes we don't, yeah, sometimes it's unmanageable. But the, you know, we'll go out, we'll document it, we can send them a notice, we can send them simply the citation. The, the ordinance speaks to, you know, the citation isn't a, a, a fee associated with the pickup. It's simply a fee because you had trash out there on the wrong day. Or you had bulky items out there that weren't picked up, and you think that, you know, the mattresses and the treadmill and the, and the microwave. It should go in the, in the household trash. So that gets sent out because you had bulky items, curbside, that aren't going to get picked up. And. You know, those kind of the two scenarios, mainly for curbside. The, the property trash is a bit more tricky, because we can't. As a municipality, go on private property, remove trash from the property, and then, you know, bill people for that. It's just not, it's legally, we can't do that, so that, that can become a struggle for. Trash and debris that are on properties, and is generally the longest fight. You know, I'm thinking of a particular property in town that we've, we've dealt with, we've gone through the legal route, and the property's, you know, still a mess. It, it, it's a battle, I mean, it's, it's, you know, a lot of these people that have these issues. Limited means to resolve the issue, they've gotten to a point that's just so overwhelming that it's almost insurmountable, so. We've exhausted all legal options, a, and at what point do we, you know, do we go after an individual? You know, where it's budget season, is it, you know, fiscally responsible for us to spend? X number of dollars, you know, trying to resolve an issue. You know, that's, that's kind of one of the, the balancing acts we have to try to, try to do when the property is, when the trash is on property. So, I don't know if that is a full explanation you're looking for, David, or?
No, that, that, that's great, Ben, and again, when we use Public Works, I mean, that's another, there's another cost with that, Public Works over the last couple of years. And I think this really started when, when Dale was over there as well as, you know, there's a cost to send Public Works and pick up the bulky waste. So, you know, the, I'll get into maybe a solution there or, or something to consider, but, I mean, they're getting a fine from us, and now we send Public Works out there as well. And sometimes that's a sweet deal for the property owner, because there could be like, you know, bad fridge, you know, everything that Ben just said, and Public Works picks it up. You know, great, we got rid of the problem for them, there's a cost with that. I know there was some talk with the Lincoln Street, there was, where you, excuse me, Lincoln, Little Canada, as far as, you know, dog feces. There's an ordinance on that, it's trying to get someone to get, come into compliance again, I mean, that situation was absolutely nasty. And a property owner is throwing it from one property to another. That becomes a civil matter at, at that point, but there are some provisions in our ordinance where. LPD or the Animal Control Officer can potentially take action on that. So there's some mechanisms there, but, you know, trying to get people to comply, and again, in that situation, it was trying to find somebody even be, be responsible for the property. You've seen the flow charts, if you have questions, we attempted to put those together to try to give you an idea of the different processes for a property maintenance, the solid ways versus curbside. Again, some of the challenges Ben mentioned, you know, we can't go on private property necessarily, clean it up. We can't hold tenants responsible, that's, you know, we hear that a lot from landlords, I didn't punch the hole in the wall, I didn't throw the trash off the back porch. No doubt you did. I don't know who that tenant is, you're responsible, you're responsible for your tenants' activities and their behavior. I get it, that's tough, I don't have a great solution for that, you need to try to figure that out. But that's the reality of the situation with some of these things. A question was asked at one point about, can we put liens on properties for those citations, that twenty thousand dollars, can we put a lien on that? We can't, as I understand. When you folks act upon dangerous buildings for condemnation and whatnot, there's specific state law there that says when something is, you know. A dangerous structure creates nuisance to the communities, unfit and whatnot. You can potentially put a lien on the property, and that's how we pursue those dangerous building acts where the city ultimately is, will demolish that building. And have to pay for the cost of demolishing it, and then we put a lien on it to recoup those demolition costs, same idea, if you could try to do that with solid waste or some other violation. It's probably a stretch to be able to say that we can use that statute in order to put a lien on properties to recoup some of these funds. Again, landlords struggling with their, the tenant's bad behavior, waiving fines, this office will waive fines. On, on occasion, depending on the circumstance. But then there's this fine that, not a fine, but this cost for Public Works when they get involved. And, you know, it's been my opinion, while it's not my call, Public Works shouldn't be waiving their fees. Because they sent somebody out there, there's time, materials, you know, fuel, tipping costs to get rid of this bulky waste, so. There may be situations where we might waive something, but if LPD's been involved, they probably shouldn't. We talked about the inefficiencies of this, you know, the, 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 the program, and we can dive into that if we need to. We can get denied access to a property, that happens, get off my property, Ben Westman. Okay, I will go get an administrative warrant then, and that's just going to cost more money then, and we will look to recoup that money. But that's not how we want to do business, right? Again, I'm, I'm not interested in money, I just want the property in compliance. And every time we get involved, the city attorney, yeah, there, there's a fee with that, fortunately, when we take people to court, and. I'll give you a number here in a moment, but as part of that, we can insist upon legal fees and costs and civil penalties. And several penalties can go from a hundred to two thousand dollars a day, I forget what the state statute is, but it's, it's, it's exorbitant amount. We will waive almost all civil penalties, with the exception of a small amount, because again, I'd rather put that, see that money put into the property. But we want our bills paid, so Brandon Isaacson, we make sure their, their bills get paid probably ninety percent of the time whenever we go to court on something. With that in mind, again, same timeframe from January of twenty nineteen. We've had twenty judgments that have been resolved, and we have about twenty twenty-one that are still unresolved. Unresolved in that their deadlines still maybe haven't been. They haven't, they, they haven't met their deadlines yet, in the sense that they still have time to come into compliance, or maybe they brought their property into compliance, but they still owe us money. So we have about forty cases out there that are either pending or have been resolved, and then we have two in the works right now that we haven't necessarily filed, but, well. Let me say it differently, we filed them, but we, the judgment hasn't been arrived at. So what do we want to consider? I don't know that we have any great ideas here, but I gave you fifteen ideas, and I'm not sure if any one of them are good or not. And again, stop me, Mayor, if I'm talking too fast or talking too much. One of the thoughts, again, remove planning and code enforcement from curbside waste issues, our jurisdiction as a department really is on property. We don't have much jurisdiction within the right of way, with few exceptions, that's Public Works and the Police Department. Might it be more efficient if Public Works, when they identify bulky waste or waste and violation, they got a crew out there, they pick it up. We give them, you know, we deputize them so they can take the appropriate actions to issue fines or penalties or costs for that. I think we could do that, I also expect the Public Works Director to say, that's great, Dave, who's going to do it? I don't have staff to make that happen. And I would say, yep, I, I get it, Mary Ann, I understand. We used to pick up trash twice a week in the downtown. I don't, I don't know who was here for that, but I, that's my understanding is that we used to do that. And my understanding is we stopped doing it because it's all about money, I don't know if that will actually improve things or not, but, you know, some of these properties produce so much waste. They could easily have trash picked up a couple of times a week, and that might help as far as like overflowing trash barrels and whatnot. I don't know if it's going to address issues as far as, you know, trash not being covered, or not being in a trash can, or loose litter. But it would, it would at least eliminate some of the massing. If the council isn't aware, private haulers, you can hire a private hauler, but the private hauler has to pick up trash on the same day that the city picks up trash. We don't necessarily want private haulers, let me say it differently, we don't want property owners to be able to put trash out any day of the week for a private hauler to pick up. We'd have trash cans on the, up and down the street all day, we might as well not enforce that provision then. That might be more user-friendly for some of these haulers, but I'm not sure that that's a direction that the city wants to go in, but I threw it out there more as an FYI that. There are private haulers, and some of them are doing a really great job, and one of the advantages of a private hauler is they will go onto private property, so. It doesn't have to be curbside, they'll walk out behind your building or go next to it, go get the trash cans, the city haulers, everything has to be curbside, they're not going to go out on private property. Us issuing fines, maybe we shouldn't be issuing fines if Public Works involved. Again, we don't even have to notify people to issue a fine, but Public Works is going to be tagging them a hundred plus dollars, and we tag them for a hundred dollars. I know some of you have gotten this complaint, certainly, we've received it, that there's some sense that. We're double dipping, what, I got a hundred dollar fine and then a hundred dollar fee, what is this all about? You would think that would get some people's attention, it does, others, they just get frustrated, and they don't pay, and it ends up in Heather's office. Can we encourage or somehow, somehow incentivize dumpsters? Dumpsters are great in the sense that, you know, great, they're off the street, they're out back or next to the property, you can put a ton of waste in them, that will resolve some issues. We also get complaints from a number of properties downtown where that dumpster fills up, I mean, again, they could probably empty the dumpster a couple of times a week. You know, and we're not going to rattle off properties, but I, I'm, I'm looking at Ben right now, and I know he can tell me at least two or three properties that. A dumpster isn't necessarily the solution, but it would be for a lot of others. Street sweeping, again, it doesn't address the cause of the litter, but the overall appearance with that increase, you know, if. You know, keeping up with the Joneses type thing, then the, the street looks good, maybe I'm less likely to throw a wrapper out there, out on the street now. I don't necessarily know what our street sweeping policy is, but it's not necessarily a regular policy where, you know, every Wednesday we're going out and sweeping the street. I know Public Works in the summer months, they have those carts, the vacuum carts and stuff, and I'm sure that helps, but. It's not the underlying problem, but again, some of this is about overall appearance, right? Mary Ann had a great quote in the Sun Journal about, you know, just talking about how. A clean neighborhood, you know, increases pride and, and reduces. Crime and theft, and it just, the overall appearance of a neighborhood just from trash has all kinds of spill effects.
Couple of questions.
Sorry.
That's okay, I appreciate it, Council, right?
I was just going to ask Director Hediger, if you could jump back to number five, I think you skipped over it, and it relates to number six, so was curious. To hear more about that. To hear more about that.
So yeah, to consider changing the fee structure with respect to dump passes and city hall, hauling, might there be a different fee structure? Might increasing this, the cost of hauling for multifamilies result in private haulers being a less expensive option? So. I don't know, but I had a brief discussion with Mary Ann as far as, you know, great. Multifamilies, cer- certain multifamilies can participate in the city's trash program. You guys should take a look at that section of the ordinance and if you can make sense of it, you'll, you're, you're doing better than most. It's, it's, it's a challenging section of ordinance with respect to solid waste rules. But if that fee was increased, not that we're looking to make property owners' lives more miserable and add more costs, especially in light of what you folks have been talking about with mill rate. Might it be cheaper for them to have a private haul? Might they actually get a dumpster then? And not necessarily be an issue for the city, but now instead of a bunch of trash cans out there, they actually have a private hollow that's gonna put a dumpster out back. And it gets picked up when it gets picked up type thing. Would that result in less curbside trash and just an overall appearance? We're, we're not sure. It might just push the problem to a different one, right? You know, an overflowing dumpster instead of a bunch of cans out there. Um, might it save the city some money because now we're not getting, um, you know, paying for the trash removal?
Is it all the same for them? Um, does the dumpster have to be picked up the same as the day for curbside pickup? Or is it whenever they have time because it's out of sight?
That's a good question. Um, I'd have to look at how it's worded. I mean, my initial reaction would be it's the same time, the same day, but I don't know that that's actually the case. Alicia, with respect to, to dumpsters. So we would have to look at that. I would suggest that maybe not. Um, you know, maybe that's some flexibility, because the concern, I believe the intent and concern with the way the ordinance is written now is. We don't want curbside waste outside every single day of the week. If you have a dumpster and it's on private property and that hauler shows up any day of the week. Okay, that's fine. I know some of the counselors, we've had, um, concerns in the past about the time that dumpsters are picked up and, you know. Garbage haulers usually like to come out, you know, early in the morning, less traffic on the road, fewer cars and, and I know that disturbs neighbors, you know, because there. There's nothing gentle about emptying a dumpster. Maybe that gets incorporated into an ordinance or something like that.
Good. Counselor Jolinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so Little Canada is my ward and as, um, Director Hedger knows, I've been pretty involved. On a monthly, if not a weekly, sometimes daily basis with these complaints. I've seen so many videos, so many pictures, um, have driven down there. Very regularly just to find out what's going on and. One of the things that I wanna say is just thank you for putting this together. Thanks for the time and the energy that, you know. You know, you put into this, I'm. Really, um, I respect the fact that, you know, you're not, this isn't about money, it's about compliance and I get that. Um, and we have to remember that over eight hundred properties, I think, you know, most of them you're not visiting, most of them you're not interacting with, like you said, so there's a few. Property owners, but my concern is really just, um, the enforceability. You know, I, I really appreciated reading through the fifteen. Suggestions that are offered up or, you know, things to consider for change. The ones that struck out the most to me were eleven, thirteen and fifteen. But, you know, what's hard for me to get my head wrapped around is even, you know, it's hard. To think about holding tenants and property owners responsible, because part of what I've dealt with is they don't know who, who they are. And then their means for, you know, achieving compliance. And, and I guess that's what you mean when you say like, the whole issue of enforceability is an issue. You know, if they know nothing is gonna be done, what's the, what's the incentive to change? If they know that. You know, their fines are still outstanding, it doesn't really matter, nothing's gonna be done, what motivates them to change? And I guess what really struck me today when you were sharing some of the statistics was that, you know, you cited like five property owners. Out of, I can't remember what you said, but you know, it's, they're like repeat offenders and I. And it, you know, for me, like the, the stuff that I have seen since I've been, um, a counselor has just been appalling and I. It, it's just awful. And, and I keep thinking like, there's gotta be a way that we can change this, but I don't know. I mean, these, some of these ideas are great. I really like the idea about, um, maybe looking at a neighborhood group association. And, and really try to get some education and some involvement. And when, I think it was the, um, number eleven, where you talk about education outreach, I mean. I also see this as a public health issue. And so as a member of the Public Health Committee, you know, I, I would love to bring this back to that committee and say, you know. This is a priority. There's a lot of priorities, but this is one because it does pertain to public health. You know, when I was getting the pictures from, um, about the, you know, the feces tossing that was going back and forth, I mean, that was just outrageous. And all I could think of was, oh my gosh, like, this is terrible. So. I, I don't know if, if it would be helpful to have a committee of people that come together to really look at these. Director Hediger, the, the fifteen things that you've outlined and really begin to develop an action plan. I mean, I'm so glad this has come to workshop. This is what I had asked. For, um, a while, a while back and I'm glad it's here because I think this really is about, um, trying to find some solutions. And these fifteen ideas are very solution focused. So it's a matter of just developing beyond just. You know, an outline of, of these ideas like an action plan, because I feel. Like it's not eight hundred residents that we're looking at, it's, or eight hundred properties, rather. It's really a pretty small percentage. But it's significant enough that when you drive by. My ward, that area of my ward, it just blows your, blows your socks off. So. Just wanted to share that.
You, you're, you're, that's, that, that's our challenge. Um, you made the comment about like what motivates them to change. We talk about this a lot upstairs. You know, do we find them till they're blue in the face? You know, um, and that goes to the mayor's point is, are we seeing change? With some people, absolutely. Um, you know, then issues a fine and I get a phone call as soon as that person gets the, uh, the letter. Saying, oh my God, I've never gotten a fine before. I'm a, I'm a good person. I've never done this before. Well, you know, and it's like that person that fine was effective for and, and we got their attention. And then others. Yeah, I, you know, I'm not sure what, how, how you get them, get them motivated. You know, I, you know, we talked about some of our resources, we can, we can take them to court and we do. Um, we could take, I suppose we could take more people to court. Doesn't necessarily get the violation abated in a timely fashion. You know, um, usually, you know, it's, it's rare that we take someone to court on a solid waste matter. It's more a property maintenance issue where the property just has a number of items that aren't being addressed in a timely fashion. And we come up, our goal really is to do a, uh, uh, we, we rarely go to court. We actually come up with a consent judgment. Um, which is actually, uh, saves the city some money as well as far as. Coming up with a judgment that either gets filed with the court or we may hold as a, um, you know, hold in. In, in anticipation of filing it, where it has self-imposed deadlines in it, where we talk to that property owner and say, well, great, how much time do you need? I need until August. We'll give you to August. Heck, we'll give you to September, you know, as a buffer there. Um, and you're gonna agree to these fines and penalties as part of that. And that works, you know, that works. Um, and if they're in default, then it's, you know, it's a legal document at that point. All we have to do is go to the judge and then we can argue for fines and that has happened. But again, if we can avoid that, I mean, it's more work for everybody.
All right. Uh, so just for the record, uh, Counselor Khalid, uh. Was excused, uh, at seven thirty, so that's why her video was off. She may rejoin us, but I just wanted to share that with the council. Uh, David, you pretty much wrapped up on your presentation.
I'm good. I mean, whatever you guys have for suggestions or wanna talk about, um, Ben and I are all ears and we can try to answer questions.
Yeah, we'll go through a question phase and our Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two or three questions, two or three comments, solutions. Uh, the fine situation, David, uh, you issue a fine on a notice of violation. Does that remain a static amount or does it increase over a period of time, like say a parking ticket that isn't paid within? Five days, it goes from five dollars to ten dollars or whatever the amount is.
So the initial fine stays the same, but if they don't pay it, um, I believe there's interest that gets tagged to it in time. If the violation isn't corrected, we can issue another fine and the way the ordinance is written, it goes incrementally. So one of them is like. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, it's like a hundred and ten, two twenty, four fifty, something to that effect.
Any idea what the, uh, that accrues is?
Uh, I don't know and I'm not sure Heather knows off the top of my head.
The, the fourth fine goes to eight hundred and fifty and I'll stay at that and continually be fined at eight fifty, you know, until the issue is resolved. So the, the nu- the numbers.
I was gonna say, that's a separate fine every day if you wish, right? Every day the violation exists.
It can be through, if, if you, through, through eighty K, which is a civil pers- uh, civil proceedings permitted by law. There's language in there that every day the property is found to be in violation is a separate finable offense. So, and that can range from a hundred dollars to. Don't call me, but it's either like twenty-five or five thousand dollars. We just did, we just had a case where there's a finding, it's being appealed, but, um, they made a finding where we potentially have a twenty-four thousand dollar judgment. Because it was over, you know, a couple, not a couple hundred days, but over a hundred days that the property was found in violation. And the judge assessed a fine of a hundred dollars every single day for that property.
Perhaps, uh, the city could look into, I, I don't know, this would be of assistance to you or not, but maybe we should consult with, uh, council. To see if we can craft an ordinance that would establish liens for these violations. Uh, you mentioned the fact that landlords, you know, they, they wanna blame the tenants, everything. I think firmly. The only thing you can do is blame a landlord. You have to have somebody who is responsible. And if we need to toughen up our ordinances to say that the landlord is absolutely responsible, then so be it. Uh, the landlord is the one who is gonna be, uh, more static than a lot of these tenants. And I think they, you have to. Establish your baseline. They have to know what you'll stand for, what you won't stand for. Uh, case in point, many years ago, we used to have people would come to the city, another city, but they would come to the city with some minor grievance, uh. Something had been injured, something had been damaged on their property or they'd been injured because of something that they blamed the city for. And the city insurance company would always settle. For. That minor amount, which was the, uh, the city's share of any settlement. You know, if we had a five thousand dollar deductible, they always said, I always settle that for forty-five hundred dollars. So the city was paying out money here, left and right, and we finally took a position that, no. We don't settle out of court. You take us to court, you win in court, then we'll pay. And it took a couple of years, but once that mantra was established. People were not so anxious to come because they knew when they came, they weren't gonna get a handout. And I think you need to do that. I really do. I guess I go back to, I, I handled this for many years in, in the division. Police departments are, are like some departments, I guess they tend to have a division that is a catch-all. And in that time, it was traffic and safety. Traffic, obviously dealt with traffic and safety dealt with everything that didn't fall into a niche of its own. And I dealt with junkyards, I dealt with waste, uh, matters, some of which were health matters. I mean, uh, this whole thing with the, uh, dog feces there in Little Canada, uh, that should be a criminal action in my estimation. And I, I just think if people don't respect the law, they don't respect the codes. They don't respect the people trying to enforce them, then maybe, just maybe, they ought to have a little fear instilled in them. But something's going to happen to them, but they don't. That's what enforces compliance. Most people go down the road, they see a speed sign, they know, oh, I, I don't wanna pay a two hundred dollar fine. But you get the guy who said, well, they're gonna have catch me first. And if you catch that guy, then you gotta reach out and numb him a little bit. That word has to go out and it has to go out fairly quickly and fairly wide. And then people begin to believe that. Once they believe, then you start having more compliance. That's what I feel. You've given us fifteen suggestions. I guess what I'd like to know is what do you think we can do as a body? To best help you in your effort to enforce compliance?
Good question. You know, I, I guess I'd wanna give that some more thought, um, so I, I don't just.
I, I don't need an answer directly. I mean, I, I, I'll obviously give you time on that. I, I think it's a problem that we need to deal with. There are areas in the city that, uh, that there are significant amounts of blight. And a lot of this blight, I think, is directly related to health issues. I mean, there's gotta be vermin and rodents and stuff like that in these areas, uh, as well. You know, let's, let's not go back to the, the dark ages or the middle ages when. Uh, we had these massive problems. That's half the reason that the government was brought into being. So I. If it takes a group of us to get together with a group of you or whatever, I'm all for it, but I think we need to establish some perimeters. And then we need to set about, uh, equitably enforcing those perimeters. And making sure that there is compliance. It may take time to get there, but it's not something I think we wanna give up on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I guess I have some, some, uh, mostly comments here. I don't have any questions. That was a great presentation. Um, so thank you, Director Hediger and, and Mr. Westman. I guess like the one suggestion that is more substantive that I could say, um, would be. Considering a lot, allowing private haulers to do one additional day during the week. Um, so they can still do the day that that area of town has their trash picked up, but then also one additional day that we are designate citywide. You know, preferably not towards the weekend where people are gonna be in town visiting, but like. Yeah, I don't know. And, and that still runs the risk of one part of the town is still gonna only have one day, it's their day and we declare Tuesday is also the citywide day for. Um, private trash haulers, then you know, that area still has their one Tuesday and. Um, we could try and figure a way around that, but. Maybe allowing just one extra day citywide, citywide, that way we can control it. Again, I'm not entirely, you know, certain that that could work out, but that's just an idea. So, um, they give it some thought. Kinda pull it off of, you know, one of the, the suggestions on the list. Yes, it's a tough issue, you know. It, it stinks, because there are bad tenants out there, just like there are bad landlords, but we're only really seeming to like be able to hold the landlords accountable here. And so we almost have to have like a trickle down effect to the tenants. Yeah, I would, I would agree with what Counselor Clement said about, you know, some of the stuff should be considered criminal, you know. Hurling feces across like that, that's absolutely disgusting and, yeah, that's, that's, that should be criminal if you ask me. So, I guess I would say, um, we could try and put a focus on landlords who maybe should. Who do rent to bad tenants and maybe need to accept more responsibility in some of the situation here. Um, because if you repeatedly rent to bad tenants, you're part of the problem. It's just as simple as that. And there are some landlords that flat out will do that. And so, you know, even the best landlord is gonna, you know, be surprised by a bad tenant every now and then. Um, but to repeatedly rent to, to people who are just, you know, not generally gonna be good tenants. We, we should be going after those landlords as much as we can. So, you know, any changes that we push here, I definitely wanna make clear that this would be a, a push by the, the council. Um, us elected officials, we're the ones pushing for it. Let us be the bad guys. I don't wanna place any responsibility on staff. This is, this is our direction as a city and if people wanna complain about it. This is what we're here for. This is our job. So I do wanna make that clear to the public too. That this would be a new push by the council and so. You know, city staff, I'd have no problem saying anyone in my ward, if you have a problem with this, call your city councillor. He's the one that wanted it. Um, I'm totally okay with that. So I, I do wanna, you know, take the burden off of staff and put it on us where it should be. So I do see potential for a more efficient system. I'm looking through, uh, Director Hediger's notes that, that was presented. So I definitely see potential for a more efficient system with the fines, um, communicating with people. But I, I think it's pretty clear that that would require probably at least like another employee in the city budget. Probably some more expenditures, just couldn't happen right now. Honestly, I think if I was knocking door to door in my ward, I could make that case to, I think, most households. So I think people generally be, would be supportive of that. We just run the risk of, well, if, you know, we raise taxes, we don't wanna hit it above that thirty mark. Um, and so we'd probably end up taking some else out of the budget, which is already, doesn't have any wiggle room and so. Um, again, issue is far beyond just this, you know, this, what we're talking about here. But I, I definitely see potential for more efficient system. And so down the road, you know, I, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of, you know, even adding a new employee if we can. Um, to really focus on, on some of these issues. Um, other than that, I think we should just continue efforts as much as we can regarding landlord registration. The more we know about, you know, who landlords are, how to contact them, the more communication we can have, um, the better we're gonna be as a city. And the more closer our neighborhoods are gonna be. And so I do also like the suggestion of having neighborhood associations, seeing what we can do to support them. I know I've talked a lot about, you know, distinguishing between different parts of the city and I definitely see Little Canada as being its own kind of distinct neighborhood. And so, um, maybe as a city, we can like work on literally just making a map of what we consider the different distinct neighborhoods in the city. And then maybe kind of forming associations around that. I mean, Tree Street would be a pretty big group, but you could honestly have an awesome group of residents that could come together. There's some really great people in the Tree Street that are just very community driven. And so I think that if we delineate the different neighborhoods in the city, then. People would step up and say, hey, you know, oh, Thorns Corner, that's my area. I wanna stand up and do that. Oh, Barkerville, I live right there. Let's, you know. People would step up and say, hey, you know, oh, Thorns Corner, that's my area, I wanna stand up and do that, oh, Barkerville, I live right there, let's, you know, let me be a part. Cuz, you know, I I I work, you know, over and I go through New Auburn to go to work every day, and so. I always do love seeing the camaraderie of, you know, like the New Auburn Association. And just like the efforts they put on, how they meet and and come together, and so I think that's, you know, good for community building, it's good for place building. And so. Yeah, I I really liked that suggestion too, and that kinda got my the gears on my head spinning a bit. So um those are all the rambling thoughts I have for now, I appreciate the efforts going forward, um if I can give any clear. You know, clarity on anything I've said, I'd be more than happy to, so thanks to everybody involved.
Good, thank you, Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, um just a couple of thoughts, you know, this is a very challenging issue, um. In the ward I represent, especially Sunnyside area, there has been a lot of problems, especially. Um the trail, the Sunnyside, um the little park, where there's gonna be a lot of graffiti, where I saw. A lot of Public Works um employees trying to get rid of that graffiti and also. Um a lot of constituent complaints where graffiti has been um done on buildings and on property. And like some of the property owners don't clean it up, so graffiti is also a problem as well, um as well as, you know, property. One idea I had was um that Counselor Clement brought up was the. The interest kept going up, especially for fees, so if someone doesn't pay, if like a landlord doesn't pay a fee, then. You know, maybe like a ten percent interest or a certain percent of interest, and then it would just continue to go up. And it is what it is, I think the majority of the responsibility does lay on on the landlord. And of course, the the tenant does have a has a responsibility to just to. Cleaner the building that they live and, you know, um that they're raising a family in. Um so just some thoughts and also just, I think, we just need to build, I don't know. Better relationship between the landlord and and the tenant, like maybe communication, maybe ways that they can work together. Um I don't know, a lot of the time, I don't know, just just an idea, I think if they, like the landlord. Is able to communicate with a tenant and has a good relationship with them, they're able to, you know, talk to them about the issues that they see, vice versa. That can be a chance for us to, you know, improve these issues and challenges that we continue to see. Um another thing is that. I brought this up to Megan Bates from Public Works a while, like last year or something, but there's this campaign called. Clean the street campaign where um I had the idea for the downtown Tree Street, especially for youth, but. Um you know, each person who lives on a like on a on a street would own that street, own a street, but. They would clean it, take care of it, plant flowers, et cetera, and then at the end of the month. They would get like a city recognition or or an award or something like that for their hard work. And the materials can be provided by the city in terms of for them to clean their own street and beautify it and et cetera. Um that is something like a nonprofit or an organization in the community can uh collaborate on, but that's it.
Good, thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I wanna start off by thanking Director Hediger and CEO Westman, um. Especially Ben, um we've been phone buddies this past week and a half, we're going for a walk tomorrow to look at some of the sites in Ward Three, so. Uh I it's not like the work isn't getting done, it's just uh some of these. Obstacles feel insurmountable with the rules we have in place now and and the conditions, um. So I recently was reading some figures and read that Lewiston is more than fifty percent renters, which seems. Unique in the state of Maine, that we have such a high rental um population, and so. I guess my question that relates to that is, how does or just period? Does a properly functioning, fully functioning rental registration help with that or? It is, I feel like we haven't really fully gotten that running yet because of the frozen positions and because of. The pandemic and we probably shouldn't be in people's homes anyways, once that's up and running, how does that alleviate? Or does it alleviate any of these issues?
We'll find out, um my my first response is that I'm not sure that it's going to necessarily alleviate. Alleviate all these issues, I'm. The way that's structured at this point, it's really an information gathering exercise, so it's how do we get the best contact information, whether it's the property owner? Who consists, uh you know, who who does the LLC consist of, the property manager? It it blows us away sometimes when we talk with a tenant, they have, they don't even know who to contact, you know, they they pay somebody once a week or. You know, once a month, but they have no contact information, they don't even know to call about the leaking tub or something like that. So I think that'll help us as far as being able to potentially reach out to people. We don't, I shouldn't say we don't have, so we we're we're pretty good at chasing down people. I mean, there are resources, again, it's not necessarily the most efficient means of doing it, you know, we have our. Our software up here, if that's not in it, we talk to the um the folks down in Water and Sewer and they may have some contact information. So there's different means for us to get to people now, um rental registration, I think will speed that up and be more efficient. Understand, the way that ordinance is written. If you sell your property, the new owner is supposed to come in and notify us of their new content, that'll be a learning curve, I mean, I I my guess is. You know, we just wanna get people registered to begin with, and then when these transactions happen, and they happen a lot, that's one of the struggles. Um that we had on uh Little Canada that um, you know, both Lee and Stephanie are aware of is that. You know, we're trying to get, Ben's trying to contact people and we're looking through the registry, and we're we're just not finding anybody who owns the property at this point, so. I I don't think it's gonna fix things, I think it'll help things, but um the issues we're talking about today are 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 beyond rental registration.
Okay, that's helpful to understand, um I think beyond that, I mean. One of the conversations we had this week was, and I was not. Fully aware of this, but like talking about landlords passing along these fines to tenants and how that could be a violation of Fair Housing Act. Um and and so it seems like even if we do focus in on those who. Own the building and are responsible, being the landlords, it, they could try to trickle it down and then could get in trouble for that. I I just think there's not a ton of. From my anecdotal understanding, there's not always a ton of understanding of every component that goes into owning a multifamily. Building or um renting to other folks to tenants, um I just remember my first time home buyers class. Uh a little uh like three years ago, and there was this couple there who. Barely had enough to scrape together a down payment, and they were like, we're just gonna get this three family in Lewiston, we're gonna live in one. And ha- have the other two people pay our rent, and we're just gonna make money off of this, and I was like, that's not how that works. Um because you have to do upkeep and you need to be the handy people for that too, so. Um I think, I I've talked about this in some other situations, but I think. Understanding partnerships with real estate services in the area might really behoove us, um so that they can. Give the reality of the situation to folks when they are looking to invest. And I it's not that I don't want people to invest in in multi-units in Lewiston, um just want them to be better prepared when they. Plan to do that, um and I think probably Counselor Jensen, who has a similar composition in his ward. It's like ninety plus percent renters rather than um some of the other wards, i- it's just. I can't tell you the number of times landlords hear about a problem and they're like, well, who fixes that, I'm like, I don't know, I'm I'm not a landlord, I can't. I can't give you that answer myself, and so I feel ill-equipped as a counselor sometimes to to help with that. Um and then just one other thing that I do want to raise, so it's on the radar, I don't think there's. A city role or a municipal role here, but I think too, when we're talking about tenants, it's not always just. An utter lack of responsibility or care, there's a lot of mental health and substance use challenges in in. Our community and those can manifest in ways that really impact their community and their neighbors. And I think as we work through the police department to add some layers in for. Crisis workers and things like that, we also need to think about what wraparound services look like in a day-to-day situation, um. There's a situation that, again, Ben and I have been talking about, and it sounds like. There is hoarding leading to mice, leading to blah blah blah, and uh uh impacting this entire building and neighboring buildings and. You know, that person might need mental health services so they can resolve the root of the problem, rather than if they get evicted, then. I can't even imagine what the what the trickle down from that is, so um. I think, um thinking this all on code enforcement is is a lot and um I'm super appreciative of all the. Efforts that have been done and are continuing to be done, if we can help with new ordinances or cleaning up what we already have. Um I think this is a willing counsel to do that, but um it's a, it definitely feels like this big snowball of a problem and like. Pulling out each thread um from it, i- it's really hard, but um I feel like we can get some good work done in the next couple months.
Good, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um just so the director won't feel that we're down on him or anything like that, I do appreciate the presentation. He and I had a lengthy conversation a while back, and I think we understand each other quite well in several regards. If we don't, then I'm sure we'll have another conversation, but no, I think it was most helpful to to talk with him. I've been there, I've done a lot of this, uh I appreciate what they're going through, but I think it should be a team effort, and I think we as a team. Should be backing these people up, they're they're, well, we only have one employee, but uh he employs everybody else on our behalf. And we should be backing them up when they're doing what's right for the city. Now I'm gonna have a little toss-up question here, where do we stand on the rental registration ordinance? We kinda deferred implementation on that a couple of times during the pandemic, is that still kind of in out there la la land somewhere? Is there an effective date for that to be?
Um I I'll chime in and then maybe Dennis, if you have, fill in any blanks, um. The clerk's office has sent out renewals um for the rental registration. Uh last year, as you guys know, was the first time we unveiled that program, and it was a terrible time to unveil a new program. Um I my understanding is at that point, maybe only half of them came in, and then the other half that came in, we were incomplete. So it wasn't necessarily um a success. Um with the renewals that have gone out this time, as of a couple weeks ago, and speaking with Allison in the clerk's office, I think again. We probably have gotten two-thirds of them back already, um and they're complete, so we're doing a better job this time as far as the the ones that. We've received, um beyond that, I'm not sure what the next steps are, and then maybe Dennis has something to add to that.
Good segue, Dave, um I appreciate that, that's exactly, I think, from there, I I think what our our intent with this. Was to try to rejuvenate the uh the program, um because of COVID and and not to rehash what what Dave just mentioned. And so our hope was to um do this, get the renewals out and really reevaluate the success uh of getting that information back. Um and then likely um talking about different strategies to um to. I I would say more targeted outreach um for for those landlords that maybe just. Daming through the first time around, didn't go through the steps, um whatnot, uh but ultimately. Um really wanted to get through that renewal round uh uh or effort to get the, get the um. I guess we're back out there, the program didn't go away, we may have paused it, or we may have. Um had to uh not be able to take some of the enforcement actions around it or things like that, but. Due to the pandemic, but reality is, it's still there, it's still something we need to move forward on, and that's what we wanna do, like I said, was the renewals. And then reevaluate uh based on that reaction, um I I had not had an update, um so I do appreciate uh. Uh Director Hediger getting that uh from the clerk, so it is encouraging to hear uh that at least, you know, two-thirds have been returned. Um so it's certainly a step in the right direction, I would say, in terms of getting um the program going at full speed like it should be. Might it be helpful to have uh an educational reminder, go out via media, social media? That we are following up on this, I mean, it can't hurt, right? If we if we don't have to pay somebody to write the story, low cost, the education isn't gonna hurt at all. Um I think that is going to be a big thing, I noticed that one of the main themes from the director was that uh contact is difficult. Going to the Little Canada situation, I think we had a landlord in that situation that couldn't wait to get out from underneath one of those buildings. He was trying to sell, I he saw himself being at the eleventh hour, and I think he probably came to realization, this landlord business is just not what I thought it was gonna be. Uh but that is, it is a problem, and I think you have to maintain that registry. And if we have a means of contact, obviously, that's going to assist in many different ways. As to the landlord being responsible, I think we have an instance, correct me if I'm wrong, uh. The party ordinance that evolved around Bates. Is the landlord not responsible for the action of the tenants, if the police go there and there are notices issued or something like that, landlords sort of told that. Hey, you gotta, you've got a bad tenant here, you've got noisy parties, but the landlord is ultimately responsible for the action of the tenants there, is that correct?
Um so I I won't get the story entirely correct, that's a better question for for the chief. I don't believe that was ever formally adopted, I believe they have a policy that speaks to that. Um where, you know, if they, and I'm trying to remember what the policy was even. Referred to, but 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 you're absolutely right, there there was something there where if you got so many phone calls. Um you almost like a nuisance ordinance type situation.
Right.
That that the um police department would respond to the property owner, hey, and 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 in some cases, I remember the. The property owner actually appreciating that because they would say, I didn't know I was, you know, the third floor tenant was getting calls from P D, you know. Five times a month, you know, I wouldn't stand for this either type thing. Um but that's a question for for the chief to see where that actually stands and and how how often it's being used.
And just a a final thought, uh we were talking about liens and that sort of thing, uh. Homeowners Association of my neighborhood, obviously, as an HOA, we have covenants, we have bylaws. We have the ability to assess uh for violations of the covenants or bylaws. Uh those assessments accrue with the rate of eighteen percent interest, and we have the ability under law. To uh register liens on the property, so if we had a homeowner who. Was not following things or something like that, a notice was issued, they didn't pay, that could accrue at eighteen percent, and pretty soon. We would have enough cloud on the title to their property that. You know, they think they're gonna sell and get out, and they aren't, they aren't gonna be able to do that. Uh so it, we haven't in the five years that I've been associated with it had a problem with anybody. And I'd like to think that maybe that's the reason, it probably isn't, but certainly it's got to stand in people's minds. Uh that's that's a pretty hefty uh hefty incentive to not violate things. But I think you're doing a a pretty good job of what you got to work for with David, uh I just wanna know what more we can do. To help you out, make your job a little bit easier, but the end result being make the city a little bit better. And if we can make your job a little easier as a result of that, so so be it, if not, well, hey, too bad, but we'll we'll make the city better anyway. Have a good night, thank you.
Counselor Ray.
Just one uh last question, I just wanted to make sure, so the document that was shared with us today didn't make it onto the city website yet. Um is it okay to share that with folks who we're currently having conversations with and maybe get their reactions as well? Um to what they think might be ways to move forward, I think. This probably isn't the end of this conversation, um much rather a starting point, um and so. Just knowing if we can share that, um and similar to what other counselors have said, just tell us how we can help.
Absolutely, yep, it's all public information, so share away.
Alright, uh thank you, uh Director Hediger, and thank you Officer Westman, I know this went a little bit later than we expected, I do. You know, I do wanna close this out, uh ninety percent of our landlords are good taxpaying people in this community. And then there are the occasional landlords that get this bad tenant, and because of state law. That tenant can stay there for a long time before a landlord can get them out, so. E- even though multiple complaints may have come in on a landlord, uh it's all, it's not all necessarily their fault. And I just, you know, I hope we as a council recognize that, that we don't wanna drive out our good landlords either, so. Uh but I do, I do wanna acknowledge, and I, you know, I've had, I've I've had many conversations with our city administrator. About how we enforce code and stuff. But I understand, I truly believe uh these employees are valuable, because without them, our city would be in in much worse shape, so. I don't, I don't wanna take ever take that away uh from our code enforcement officers, cuz it's a tough job, just like several of our. Uh departments have, you know, we just have some tough, tough areas sometimes to deal with, so. Anyway, some really good comments tonight, counselors, and good direction, I think, and Dave, uh good preparation for this meeting, so thank you. Okay, yes, yeah, there's nothing else, uh have a nice evening.